I'd like to welcome everyone to the March 19th, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Ms. Chuckins, if you could call the roll, please.
Mr. Schaller.
Here.
Mr. Cle.
Here.
Ms. Stafford.
Here.
Chair Florakis.
Here.
Mr. Connolly.
Here.
Ms. Macbeth.
Here.
Mr. Quarles.
Okay, our first order of business is approval of minutes. We have minutes for February 19th and February 26th. Does anyone have any corrections or additions to the minutes?
I have one very simple correction. On the February 26th minutes, the H is missing from my first name, but it's there on the 19th.
I hear motion to approve. I'll move that we approve the minutes from February 24th, or February 19th and February 26th.
I'll second.
Ms. Chuckins.
Mr. Schaller.
Aye.
Mr. Cle.
Aye.
Ms. Stafford.
Aye.
Mr. Florakis.
Aye, but abstain from February 26th because I was absent.
Mr. Connolly.
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth.
Aye.
Mr. Quarles.
All right, nothing on the consent agenda. We'll move into our public hearings. First public hearing is PCR 14-003, Request of Evelyn Nursery to amend the zoning ordinance to define garden center and allow garden centers with a special use permit in the B2 corridor business district. Ms. Murphy?
Yes, Mr. Chair. If it's okay, I'd also like to discuss PCR 14-004 since they're both related in one presentation, and we can take votes separately.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Patrick Evelyn, on behalf of Evelyn Nursery, is proposing to open a garden center at 910 Capital Landing Road. The first case, 14-003, contains three text changes required to add garden centers to the city zoning ordinance. The first text change is to define garden centers, which is a retail establishment that sells plants, horticultural, and garden supplies and services. Bulked materials such as mulch, gravel, topsoil, sand, and pavers may also be sold. The second change is where to allow garden centers. Staff recommends allowing garden centers with a special use permit in the B2 corridor business districts, which may include outdoor display and storage. If outdoor display and storage or proposed screening is required, as noted in my memo. The third change is to parking. Staff recommends one parking space for each 500 square feet of floor area, plus one parking space for each 5,000 square feet of outdoor display area or storage area. The second request, PCR 14-004, is for a special use permit for the garden center at 910 Capital Landing Road, formerly the Old City Shop. And you can see that on this drawing here, and that's the Old City Shop building. The applicant proposes to demolish two small additions, one here on the left-hand side and a portion of the rear of the existing building, and to remodel the remaining building into the garden center. The front portion of the building will contain an office, indoor retail showroom, and equipment storage. And the rear bay areas and area in front of the bay will contain garden sales. They proposed, as you can see here, this is the retail area, the sales area, and this area will be the storage. They propose removing pavement in front of the building and replacing it with landscaping. Two entrances will be constructed with 19 parking spaces on the right side of the property. A wooden board-on-board fence and gate is proposed to screen the front and sides of the property from view. A 10-foot landscape strip is proposed in front of the fence. All storage will be located behind the fenced area and will not exceed eight feet in height. The area behind the fence is approximately 40,000 square feet with approximately 3,250 square feet of indoor retail showroom. The applicant notes that Evelyn Garden Center will unload, store, and load garden materials and supplies outdoors. In addition to shrubs and trees, the garden center will contain a variety of landscaping and hardscaping products, which include items such as mulch, gravel, pavers, topsoil, hay, straw, and sand products. They further note that they will not store trash, debris, or rubbish of any kind, and that no manufacturing of products will occur on the site. The applicant also proposes to provide landscape consultation, design, and off-site installation services. This property is designated as corridor commercial land use in the 2013 comp plan. This land use category designates land on the city's heavily traveled entrance corridors for commercial and service uses primarily oriented to the automobile. This category applies to local shopping areas, hotels, restaurants, and substantial sections of Richmond Road, Capital Landing Road, York Street, Second Street, and the small portion of Moretown Road. To ensure high-quality development, the more intensive commercial uses should require special use permits. Corridor commercial land use is intended to promote the city's economic development policy for its limited, remaining high-visibility commercial sites. Land to the north and south and west on Capital Landing Road are all designated as corridor commercial land use. The land to the east is designated conservation area and high-density multifamily residential. This property, along with properties on Capital Landing Road to the north, south, and west, are zone corridor business district B2. The property to the east is zone multifamily doiling district RM2. The special use permit section of the zoning ordinance establishes criteria for special use permits as outlined in my memo. The B2 district is designed to apply to commercial corridors and is in place for Capital Landing Road, Second Street, York Street, Richmond Road, west of New Hope Road, and Jamestown Road 199. The proposed addition of garden centers as a use requiring a special use in the B2 district will ensure that any projects approved are in harmony with the comp plan, other uses in the B2 district, and uses on adjacent properties. The special use permit process allows special conditions, such as bonds, special lighting requirements, and limitation on hours of operation, additional open space, landscaping, and screening requirements to be imposed on a case-by-case basis. Additional adding gardening centers as a special use in the B2 district requires adding a definition for garden centers and amending the parking regulations for garden centers as noted previously. The applicant proposes to use the property and portions of the existing building for a garden center. They propose to upgrade the property by renovating the existing building, removing a large amount of pavement in the front, and landscaping the property. The outdoor storage area will be screened from view by fencing and landscaping, and the proposed use of a garden center at this location is appropriate. It will bring a use that is not currently located in the city and will upgrade the building and site, which will enhance the streetscape of Capital Landing Road. The Site Plan Review Committee reviewed this request at their February meeting and recommends approval. The Architecture Review Board reviewed the conceptual design and recommended conceptual approval with conditions. Therefore, staff recommends that Planning Commission recommend the city council for case number PCR 14-003, that the zoning ordinance be amended to add a definition for garden centers, to revise the corridor business B2 district to allow garden centers with a special use permit, and to revise the off-street parking requirements to add a requirement for garden centers as detailed in the attached ordinance. For PCR 14-004, the special use permit for Evelyn Garden Centers, staff recommends that a special use permit for Evelyn Garden Center at 910 Capital Landing Road be approved, condition upon the following: the height of the material stored outside of the building on the property shall not exceed the height of the proposed fence; if the retail portion of the garden center ceases, the storage of all materials outside of the building must be removed; and three, the permit is approved for the current owners. Any change in ownership would require a new special use permit. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Representatives from Evelyn Garden Center are here. If you have any questions to them.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and then we'll discuss after that. So right now, I'll open the public hearing for PCR 14-003 and 004. If anybody would like to come forward and speak. Would the applicant like to say anything to us?
I'd just like to say, my name is Henry Hawke in Representative Evelyn's office. I'd like to thank Carolyn and her people, and very, very nice to work with. We look forward to having this business down in Williamsburg. Any questions that you all may have, we'll be happy to try to answer.
Thank you. Anybody else? We'll close the public hearing and our discussion.
Well, we saw it at Site Plan, and I think that after many years of thinking about what we could do, what the possibilities are for the Old City Shop, I thought this was a fantastic use of the site, and so we were all happy with it at Site Plan. And obviously, there's minor requirements that are still here in ARB, which I assume your crowd saw.
Yes.
That they still have to look at, but in terms of changing the ordinances and providing the special use permit, I'm certainly all for it.
Yeah, I'd agree. I think that adding garden centers into the corridor business district B2 is completely compatible with the other uses in that district. I don't see any problem with changing the zoning ordinance to allow for that, and then I, once again, think that this is a good use for the Old City Shop and support the special use permit.
I agree. My only question was why, and this reflects maybe my ignorance of the zoning ordinance, but why we would not want to allow this by right? In other words, why require that this be only allowable with a special use permit? Is there a kind of governing logic to when we decide what we can do by right?
Yeah, I think the logic to this was the amount of storage that's on the property, and with a special use permit, you can regulate the height, you can add more screening, you can add more landscaping and those kinds of things. So it was a use that we thought was better appropriate for a special use permit process because then you get to look at it on a case-by-case basis, and you can look at adjacent properties and things that are around it, and to determine whether that use is appropriate or not.
And it's solely because of the amount of, the nature of the business requires you to have a lot of material stored on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Well, in addition to the sort of outdoor nature of much of the sales, whereas for most businesses, the sales take place indoors.
Motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that, let's do them one by one, that we recommend to city council that the zoning ordinance be amended as stated in PCR 14-3.
Second. Ms. Chuckins?
Mr. Schaller.
Aye.
Mr. Cle.
Aye.
Ms. Stafford.
Aye.
Mr. Florakis.
Aye.
Mr. Connolly.
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth.
I'll go ahead, too, then I make a motion that we recommend to city council that a special use permit for the Evelyn Garden Center at 910 Capital Landing Road be approved with the conditions stated by staff.
Ms. Chuckins?
Mr. Schaller.
Aye.
Mr. Cle.
Aye.
Ms. Stafford.
Aye.
Mr. Florakis.
Aye.
Mr. Connolly.
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth.
Well, it passed. Thank you. We look forward to having you in our city. Thank you for choosing the city. Our next order of business is our open forum. If anyone would like to speak. Please state your name and your address for the record.
David Cramby, 201 Harrison Avenue, and it's a pleasure to be here. I've been absent for some time, and it's also wonderful to see youth. I don't see any gray hair up there, and that's a good thing for the city. So why am I here? Well, two things happened. One, at our last beautification committee, and as you know, I'm on the beautification committee, and I was the chair, and now Joe Herschler is the chair. I'm appointed by city council. Jack came and challenged the beautification committee to see if it wanted to redefine itself, and he implied whether we should report to the city council or whatever. And the second thing that happened is I read an unusually interesting article in the Gazette. Normally, I just look at the front page and see if there's anything worth going beyond a few words, and they had a rather lengthy article about what Mickey McCabe had to say about Second Street and the priority for the underground wiring on that street. And so that got me thinking. And here are the two thoughts, and they're just ideas that need to be developed over time and in one-on-one or small groups or whatever. But my first thought is that the real strength of the city are the committees, particularly this committee, which I've always admired over the years. And now the EDA has become an extremely dynamic visionary committee, and I like to think the beautification, although it is also becoming extremely important and doesn't just pick the biggest sunflower or something like that in town, which, if that's all it did, I wouldn't be on it, or at least I wouldn't want to be on it. So we have this great strength, and quite frankly, the talents in these committees are talents that don't exist anywhere else. They don't exist necessarily on city council, and they don't exist on city staff. City staff has certain sets of talents and so forth. But not only are they the great talents, but there's, you represent the citizens, which is what governance should be all about. And so how can we make these committees, including beautification, more effective? And I think one important step could be to have more cross discussion. When I was at the EDA meeting dealing with the flower pots on Prince George Street, the concept of urban planning came up by a new member, Todd. And that just rang a big bell with me because urban planning encompasses everything. I mean, you allocate three to four to five million dollars each year. The EDA has hardly anything. It's trying to see if it can raise 100,000 or 200,000 to have it at its discretion, and the beautification committee just went up from 1,500 to $5,000 because Jack said we could award that much for beautification efforts. But we still don't cross-talk. And then I started thinking about what Mickey was so upset about. And so I started just thinking about the decisions you have to make and how they're made. And so let's just take underground wiring. We have that whole list. I still like a suggestion that was made years ago by Councilman Hoagland, and that why don't we have zero-based budgeting? Of course, we don't, but it'd be nice to sort of get closer to that, to not have what's been going on for the last seven, eight years dictate, and then you have to challenge it. And that's part of my theme here. So the idea is the following: one, that we think about how the EDA and the beautification committee might participate in how the priorities of the three, four, or five million. And if you think about just the underground wiring, I'm not saying what's the answer. But if economic development is important, then that should put things above something else. If beautification is important, and that's another thing that come into play, and if you have a committee that's totally have the expertise about economic development, that input would be nice to have. And if I were with you, I'd be happy to have the likes of that kind of input. You're still the recommender, but, and the same with the role of beautification. So the first idea is we think about how we can have some more cross discussion. And one idea I have is to have the chairs and vice-chairs or whatever, each of the three committees maybe meet and talk about it, but the first thing is to just think about it. The second idea I have is I'd like, all we do is recommend. We're not in charge, but the recommendation process should be as non-painful as possible. And when I come to some of these meetings and everything's prepared, I feel like I'm put in the mode of criticizing, and I don't like that. It's not a comfortable position to be in because it's already laid out, and then if you have a different idea, you have to talk in ways that, I don't know, it's just not the most comfortable approach. So I think, as an example, because you are in charge of three to four to five million dollars each year, that maybe the CIP discussion should start with your committee in the spring, and that you bring in some people like Mickey McCabe or whatever, who are people who have things they want to see or see changed, and you reflect on them, and then you send some ideas to city staff, and city staff works on this over the usual process, and then it comes back to you in January. But if you want to have some big change or even some small change, you've put that input in right at the beginning, and then you get back reasons why it's a good idea or not, and then the discussion's open, and then in January, there's much less pressure, and there's been much more time to think through what are very important priorities. So those are my two ideas. One, we think about how we could have more cross input as urban planning, and the second is that we have the committees be more upfront in recommending at the beginning, and then the staff looks at the ideas because it's getting citizen input, and then you have the cross-talk in the usual process, and that's it. But thank you all for serving. It's a lot of time in this committee.
Thank you. All right, we'll close the open forum. Nothing under site plans and subdivisions. Under unfinished business, we have PCR 14-009, the review of the regulations for room rentals to visitors, specifically bed and breakfast. And I'd like Ms. Stafford to lead us in that discussion, since I was absent at the work session.
Okay. So at our last work session, we basically had a straw man that Reed proposed that just was his sort of first take on what might be some things that we should consider in thinking about what changes we want to make to the regulations associated with bed and breakfasts. And we did come to some consensus on some items, and on other items, we did not. And so what we need to do today is to think further about the items that we didn't come to any consensus on, and if we're ready as a committee, then for the things, for where we have consensus, to direct Reed to begin drafting the ordinances that would be needed to implement our recommended changes. And so as we did in our first meeting, these things are divided into sort of different areas. The full-time live-in manager question, the question about serving meals other than breakfast, the hosting weddings, the hosting business meetings or other revenue-producing events is the last one. Where we did essentially, I think, come to consensus and sort of feel that we had completed our discussion and knew what we wanted was in terms of the meals, we all agreed that serving of any meals made sense, limiting it to breakfast didn't make any sense, and that there should also be no prohibition on serving a limited number of meals to guests of people who are staying in the bed and breakfast. And we decided that although it was arbitrary, we had to set some sort of cap, and that the cap would be that the number of guests would be equal to the number of authorized sort of people staying in the bed and breakfast. So if there were four bedrooms with a double occupancy, that would be eight people, so they could serve to a total of 16. And that we didn't need it to be tied to each guest can, each person staying there can only invite one guest, but it was just a sort of total overall cap. That was the easy one. Harder was the discussion about the full-time live-in manager, and we did feel that if there was a bed and breakfast that had a resident manager who was not the owner, that that resident manager should be allowed to have a non-resident employee just as a owner occupied bed and breakfast would be allowed to have a non-resident employee. What we did not come to any consensus on was whether or not, if there was an owner occupied in bed and breakfast, whether the owner could also employ a full-time live-in manager, and if so, would there be any restrictions on that arrangement? We also didn't come to any consensus about hosting weddings or business meetings. One of the things that came up was that there may be triggers for additional requirements for both weddings and business meetings that would be building code-related, that wouldn't really be anything that we would have authority or jurisdiction over. So we might be able to talk about this, but in the end, it might be that the code compliance would preclude any of those things from going forward. So I think we should open the discussion back up, and is there, are there any particular items that someone would like to start the discussion on?
I'd like to tackle the weddings and business meetings. I don't know, it just seems a bit silly to me that a house next door to B&amp;B could have a party or host a wedding or, and not fall under any regulations. And these folks that own the B&amp;Bs have to go through, or are not allowed to do this, and that the city might consider putting different restrictions on it. Personally, I really don't see the problem. I think it will help our sales taxes, sales tax base with catering, room rentals. We might be able to really improve what's going on in the B&amp;B industry by allowing these small events. The city already has in place parking regulations, noise ordinances that they would have to Personally, I think it's a slam dunk for them. How many weddings could a B&amp;B have anyway?
Well, that was our discussion, really. That was one of the key points in the discussion, is that while you might host a wedding for your children or maybe even a relative, that's not an event that you're likely to do three weekends in a row in April. But certainly, during wedding season in Williamsburg, that was the frequency that really, to us, sort of set it apart from Planning Commission, our jurisdiction, sort of discussion, that and the parking issue, I think. The other thing that came up was sort of the codes compliance, which we don't have any ability to do, which might, you know, ADA requirements, number of bathrooms, other things that, you know, unfortunately, we don't have any jurisdiction over.
So was it Matt Westheimer, or is that, I guess, with codes compliance, so that if we, with many of the other areas we were talking about, sort of two times standard capacity and other numbers that came from some of the owners of 25 or 30 and other numbers, but once we hit that 50 benchmark, while you might see having a party at your own house that has 50 or 100 people come through it, but they would then be moved into a new category of a commercial establishment doing a large-scale operation. So I mean, if we still want to, I think that we all thought, like you, that there's a reasonability factor here of, yes, you can have a party, yes, you, you know, it's a home, it's a house, and these are large houses, you know, to allow it, but for it to work simply, you know, without having to have too many additional codes applied, we would be wanting to put a size, you know, cap that would be smaller than the house could quote-unquote "handle" as just simply a home having a party. And, but then, is the issue is a frequency issue. Is there a mechanism that we want, that we'd like to have, and this is where I don't think we have our heads around this, that is not too restrictive to simply property rights and, you know, business rights and things like that versus neighbors being next door to a wedding every single Friday, Saturday through six months of the year?
And I understand those points. I guess my biggest problem is we now have B&amp;Bs that are being converted into college They're having parties.
Oh, golly, yeah.
And I just, I'd like to see the B&amp;B owners at least have the opportunity to be able to bring in additional revenue to try to enhance their business. Maybe it's a niche Williamsburg can fill well and help with recreating a vibrant downtown by hosting these small events. We lost a hospitality house to the college. A lot of events went there. The Alumni House, they conduct a lot of weddings and other events downtown in that same quarter, in that Richmond Road quarter. And you're right, there should be some type of frequency and some type of cap on the number of people, and if it's 25 or 50 or, you know, whatever we decide, I would just really like them to have the opportunity to be able to explore that in their business model.
I don't think anybody's asking, any of the bed and breakfast owners I've talked to, no one's asking about an 100-person party. I mean, they're talking, they only have the space, even, you know, of the varying bed and breakfast owners, some don't even have the space to do something like that. like that. But those who do, you know, they're talking twenty, thirty, maybe forty. So I think it's important to keep that.
But how does that, how should that size be determined?
Well, I mean, I would put it on the business. I think a business isn't going to over-capacitate themselves. Oftentimes, they have to have, you know, a backup location for rain versus if it's outside. So, you know, they're limited in the business that they currently own. They're not going to overcrowd however many people they can have.
Well, I do think if we're thinking about, you know, one of the things about the bed and breakfasts, they are in residential neighborhoods, right? So fifty people in my neighborhood would be a huge parking issue, right? And so I think that to say, well, we should leave it on the business, I think we have, it's up to us to also think about the neighborhoods. And so I think there, that we need to think about some, something that puts a cap on capacity that is based on the size of the home or the size of the lot or something of that nature, rather than just saying, oh, for good business purposes, they won't do this. Because I think the impact on the residents around them could be significant. I think we do need to think about protecting the neighbors.
The impact, though, of turning these homes into student housing is even worse. And that's what concerns me. I mean, we're at about fifty percent capacity in the B and B industry. I'd like to see where people are fighting for these permits to get back into that business. And you're right, the impact on the surrounding housing is a concern.
We do need to remember that not all the B and Bs are in the student-oriented neighborhoods. There are B and Bs in other neighborhoods where the alternative is not turning it into student housing, and it's a different type of, so I do think we have to think about the whole landscape of being.
I agree. I think we can find a middle ground of, would you be okay with a special exception or something where, you know, a one-time thing, someone comes out and evaluates the property on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, I think we can't solve it that way. And I say that because it makes it impossible to plan. You can't, you can't put something on your website that says, we can host a wedding, so long as we get permission from the city.
Well, no. One-time annually, you get the permit.
I see, so it's a recurring permit for a year.
For the amount of events, because I'm sure these kinds of things as a business, they occur.
What York does, right, is basically say, you know, you get the special use permit, and in that, it states what the maximum number of guests are based on the capacity and condition of the facility, right? So it's basically a, unique to each property, it doesn't impose conditions on a property that aren't relevant for that property. So if it's a large property with adequate parking and, you know, the woman who said, you know, she's off by herself, you know, there's a different impact on neighbors. I really think that what the focus should be on is really protecting the neighbors.
I agree. And maybe to that point, we should limit the events at bed and breakfast to those that are on the commercial corridors, where there's not a lot of residential surrounding them.
So to the Richmond Road and Jamestown Road?
Mm-hmm.
And I think that, I mean, we actually have the foundation for some of this sort of matrix of what would be acceptable, because we already have different categories of bed and breakfasts. If they are on a smaller lot, they're maxed out at four rooms. If they have a larger lot, they can have six rooms. I mean, so we already have the foundation for them that could then, you know, fill in with these other activities that they could do.
So did, what did people think about the sort of York regulations that do set, you know, sort of this, based on the property, establish a maximum number of guests, have a frequency limit of no more than one event per day or two in a seven-day period?
I like their regulations.
Yeah, have the time limit, so it's ten AM to ten PM is the event, and setup and takedown has to happen in, you know, sort of right around that same event, so takedown can't happen at one AM in the morning and things like that.
As far as the timeframe goes, when does Alumni House have to stop? Is it eleven or is it ten? Do you know? Does anyone know?
Your neighborhood should know.
I sit out, I sit out and listen to the music. We enjoy it. Yeah, you're right, I shouldn't have that.
Well, there's capacity, and then one of the things that York is regulating, and we, I think we discussed this last time, is frequency. So York says, no more than one event per day and no more than two events per week. Now, if you're talking about weddings and only weddings, that seems like a pretty reasonable ordinance. But if you're talking about hosting business meetings and, you know, you want to have luncheons, and maybe the best-case scenario in terms of your staff is, you know, three luncheons a week, this ordinance wouldn't allow for that. And in my thinking about this, I'd kind of conflated weddings and special events as, you know, trying to use a similar logic or trying to apply a similar logic to both of those things. But I wonder if that's, I wonder if that's right. I wonder if that's the right thing to do.
You know, if you're thinking about, really about protecting the neighbors, to me, then it would be a size trigger, right? So we have this number, maybe it's not the right number, but, you know, a business event that's, you know, two, two times the maximum capacity, that doesn't count as an event. It's an event that exceeds that sort of, almost that by right limit.
In other words, we've already said you can cater a luncheon for double your capacity, so up to twenty-four, twenty-five.
That's not an event.
That's just a, yeah, that's interesting, right.
So if a wedding was twenty-four people, would that be precluded from that?
Well, it's an interesting approach.
Right, I mean.
No, it's just curious.
Yeah, because then you can still have it inside theoretically.
That's what sort of essentially, you know, once again, the capacity is set based on an assessment of the sort of capacity of the facility, that we allow for more than that for these meals. And so, you know, what's to say that a wedding is different from a lunch, right? It's really about the scale of the event that makes it an event.
Yeah, that's an interesting idea. And then also, you have a rain, you know, because I think we're imagining, and I think this was discussed last time, is weddings that are happening outside. But then it rains, as it will, and if you're under twenty-four, if you're under your capacity, your luncheon capacity, or whatever your catering capacity, whatever we call that thing, no sweat, right? Not no sweat, but theoretically, anyway, you could bring that inside without kind of running afoul of what we think of as a reasonable capacity for the building. But if you're more than that, now all of a sudden, you've got to think a little harder about what the rain plan is.
Tents.
Pardon?
Most weddings I see, they have tents.
Yeah, sure. I mean, yes, of course, but that's not, I guess the idea is that it needs to be, maybe a smart way to proceed is to acknowledge that above a certain number, there has to be some planning that goes into the event, and that, because moving it inside, even with a tent, actually, at a certain point, and I think the number was fifty, you start to trigger building code requirements.
So that's the threshold?
I think it was fifty, was what Matt discussed last time.
And it's based on individually of each house and how much, you know, the construction of the house, the floor capacity, the bathrooms, the, it's a whole list of building code requirements that has to be looked at for each one of these properties.
What was the, he described something that was like one person for two hundred square feet. Is that a hard deadline?
I think it depends on your construction, too. I mean, you could have a wood frame construction, whereas it'd be different, the capacity load. I mean, you see it in the paper all the time, when people use decks, and they put fifty people on the deck, and the deck can't handle it, and it collapsed. So that's the reason for the building code requirements, is for the safety and healthies of the, of the people who would come to the event. So I think, set aside the Planning Commission requirements, they're going to have to meet the building code requirements for each home, and they're going to have to meet the health department requirements, whether they cater or don't cater. And if they don't cater, you basically have to have a commercial kitchen.
Well, so this kind of gets back to the question of whether there's a reason for us to introduce another kind of limit. So we have one natural limit, which is the capacity that we've set aside for a catered, for a meal that's being served. That's a limit. So if you're, whether it's a wedding or a luncheon or, you know, a business meeting, twenty-four, not, I see, keep saying twenty-four, twenty-four, eighteen, or whatever that number is, is allowed. Or we're proposing, I think, in our discussion, that to be allowed, no matter what the nature of the event is, right? Above that point, when you hit fifty, now it's building code time. So we don't have to really talk about anything above fifty. The question is, do we need to, do we want to introduce a number that is between that double capacity and that fifty threshold, that we want to, you know, keep these events to a particular size? And, and I don't know, I think the numbers that we've heard that are being proposed for these little outdoor weddings are in the twenty-five to thirty to thirty-five range. It's sort of right in what we're talking about. But it may well be that this is not something that we need to kind of put some boundaries around, because the boundaries already kind of exist at that, again, at that fifty threshold. But I don't know. I mean, I put that out there. We've got one at twenty-four, we've got one at fifty already. Do we need a, do we need one in between?
Apparently, the ordinance is silent to what happens between twenty-four and fifty. So we need to have some statement there that allows, or else the silence means they can't.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, right, absolutely.
Right, so the question is, if it's allowed, then?
Do we want to put some boundaries around it between those two numbers?
And my concern would be frequency and parking issues.
So we could say up to fifty?
Well, we wouldn't have to. In other words, above fifty, the building inspector comes around and says, well, you've got to have outside toilets, you've got to have exit signs everywhere. So the building code.
Well, I think he's going to come around even if you don't have fifty. I think he's going to.
To make sure that you don't have fifty.
No, but I mean, to regulate, you have to have some kind of building code approval and health department approval to change this use, because you're adding weddings and you're adding the other functions in there.
So you are changing, no matter what, the building, the business use.
You go above the fifty, I think you kick in different code requirements, a higher standard of code requirements. But I think that's what Matt was talking about at the last meeting. When you went above fifty, your use went changed. And it required a lot more things you had to do. Below that, you still have, I think you still have to meet building code requirements, and I think you still have to meet the health department requirements, let alone the requirements that we may put as a zoning requirement.
But I think there's also a signal, I mean, I understand that the building requirements change, but I do think that there's a signal that I'm hearing consensus over the different meetings, that we feel some comfort in that twenty-four to fifty range, you know, a thirty-five person wedding, forty, whatever. So I don't, I don't feel superfluous to actually make a statement of up to fifty, because then if they want, if someone wants to propose something that is exceeding that, then they could come back with special petitions and special use permits. But at least that defines sort of the parameters of what we're thinking as a collective of citizens of the city, you know? We're thinking about that range.
So that would be a by right, anything above that, they'd have to come?
I mean, obviously, it would be by right, once we, you know, if we establish these things. The up to fifty. But I think the by right that I think is going to have, is going to have a bunch of other requirements with regard to if you satisfy parking or have a parking plan, you know, I mean, because I mean, a lot of what we heard at our work session was, you know, some of these places potentially could stack a bunch of extra cars, but otherwise, they actually have parking plans. So Colonial Gardens is by the bank, the C and F Bank, they have a right to do overflow parking at the bank, you know? The White House, you know, could have some of their people, they didn't say, they didn't just, I mean, just living off of Jamestown Road myself, you know, maybe people could use the college. I mean, they could have a plan for their parking, so it isn't necessarily, we want to say that the housing inspector person's going to come and say, you have to have fifteen spots on your own property, you know, but a parking plan.
Yeah, I just agree, a parking plan. And I think that the parking plan could include that, you know, any event over, you know, whatever our threshold is, the twice capacity, you know, that your parking plan might be that at some point, you bring in a valet, right? And because the college is three blocks away, and so guests aren't going to walk three blocks, but a valet parking company could do it.
So who would the parking plan be submitted to? Would it be submitted to us?
Well, I think, once again, this is something that just happens once, right? Yeah, and so I.
Would that be an administrative thing?
I mean, you did it as a special use permit. It'd be part of the permit.
You could do it as a special exception, which means it would go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, which is usually a thirty-day process. If you do a special use permit, it's a ninety-day process.
Special exception, I think.
That's too cumbersome, I think, for them.
And the special exception applies to the, an owner. And so when a property changes hands, then you have to redo.
It depends on if it's written that way. If you put a condition on it that it's for that owner only, it's only for that owner. If there's no condition on it, it runs with the property usually.
But it's not the kind of thing that you'd have to resubmit every year or every event or anything like that. It would be a one-time.
But in terms of, okay, in terms of, I think, like the inherent capital of a business, if a business is allowed to do these functions, but their ability to do it is tied to that owner, then if the owner of that business wanted to sell it with the ability to do these functions as part of, you know, what they're capitalizing and putting on the market, then I think we actually would want that right to carry with the property versus the owner.
I'm fine with that. So the things that I would, you know, in terms of sort of protecting neighbors is parking, you know, everybody's.
Parking plan.
Worst friend. Frequency and time limits. And maybe the time limits aren't important because of the noise ordinance covers it. I don't know.
The noise ordinance, what is the cutoff for that?
Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock, that's what I, okay.
Well, the noise ordinance still has a cutoff during the day, isn't it sixty-five decibels? So, I mean, it operates.
But after eleven o'clock, if you can hear it over the property line, it relates the noise ordinance. It doesn't matter what the decimal level is.
Whether the decimal eleven is, okay.
So we're covered there.
Yeah, I think that the noise ordinance covers that.
So basically, parking plan and frequency.
And so we're not going to set guidelines about frequency. We're going to, we're going to pass that buck to the Board of Zoning Appeals?
No.
We should set some expectations about, okay.
But the frequency is only for those larger functions that are above the double capacity to the up to fifty.
Above twenty-four, yeah, right, above the double capacity. Thank you, yeah.
Which that would more likely be a wedding than a corporate function.
I don't know.
I mean, what if you were having corporate barbecue, right? And you don't, your space is not attractive, so you want to do it at a location.
Yeah, I mean, you have, you have this facility, and people eat breakfast and go off to see the sites, and your, and your site is basically kind of lying fallow. Now, that's a time to kind of, you know, take care of the business and get things done. But particularly if you have, say, a live-in manager, somebody who can actually run the place, then that's, you know, you could, I could see a best-case scenario of five meetings a week and a wedding on Saturday, and then, you know, Sunday's quiet. From a business perspective, right, if you can, if you can handle that.
Handle it, yeah.
I mean, I could see that being something that you would aim for, right?
You know, rehearsal dinners, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, now, realistically, does that happen? I suspect not. But again, it's a target.
Well, and if for the right facility, there may be some facilities that it's a more attractive.
Yeah, exactly, venue.
Venue, it has better, you know, amenities for those kinds of events.
Right. But again, it's in the middle of the day, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's okay, too. We're not talking about, I can't imagine that anybody has any dreams of, you know, every evening during the week, having a, you know, a big event with a band out on the lawn kind of thing, right? So I don't think we're talking about that. I mean, and this is a way of kind of raising the question of whether we need to set limits on business meetings versus weddings.
Within, you know, sort of a non-owner occupied, which we now allow, right? So it really is an investment purpose. I mean, I don't think you can say that same thing, right? Because if you're doing it for sort of the different purposes, then this is where you live.
Yeah, right.
You could talk about, so I do think we need a frequency. Once again, it's not, it's not really about, it's really about just, if it's something that never would have been violated if it just assures the neighbors that there, that there are limits, right? So I'm getting ready to potentially purchase a home next to a bed and breakfast, I'm going to want to know what could happen. And so I think we want to have that in there.
Yeah, and again, we're only talking about that twenty-four to fifty range, right? Under twenty-four, three meals a day, conceivably, right, could be catered. Well, right?
Yeah, I mean, because once again, I think reasonably, in terms of, you know, what will happen and impact on parking, yeah.
What do you think about limiting that to the commercial quarters?
It's a pretty interesting idea, yeah, because we already make that distinction in the bed and breakfast ordinance, right? We kind of have, we have more.
But you think about the woman who came in who said that she, you know, she's sort of in this sort of isolated thing. I mean, why would we not want to let her have a wedding?
That's an entrance corridor. That's on Jamestown.
It's on Jamestown.
Is it?
Colonial, yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's on Jamestown.
So there's, I just think of the one that's in, the one on Capitol Landing, is that a, that's not a?
Well, that's a, for ARB purposes, that's a corridor.
Is that a commercial corridor, though?
Oh.
Yeah, if you look in your.
They've got that big house, and they have the large yard.
In our zoning ordinance, you could go up to the four if you're on the certain corridors in the city.
Yeah.
Henry Street, Lafayette Street, Richmond Road, Jamestown Road, Capitol Landing Road, and I think Page Street was the other street, were the main corridors that.
So Capitol Court is not, it's just a little, two-room one tucked in.
It's a non-conforming B and B.
Non-conforming, so that would not be subject to this. What other?
There's that one that's on Monumental.
There's one on College Terrace.
Yes.
Yes, it's correct.
Yeah.
There's one in Skipworth, and there's, there's a.
So there is, there's a handful. But the. So there is, there's a handful, but the corridor includes the supermajority of them.
Well, and that's also where we allow more, right? There are, there are more, there's more capacity in the corridors than we currently are using. I, I think the other, the other way to think about it is in terms of lot size, in terms of how close you are to those neighbors. But I kind of, I mean, I like the cleanness of the corridor, because there is, again, already that distinction made within the, within the B and B ordinance.
Well, the lot size is already impacting your capacity, so it's, it's going to impact when you flip into this category.
Yeah, right, that's a good point, too. I, I think we're very close to...
That's what it seems like to me, too.
Figuring this out.
So, and the frequency of one a day, or two in a seven-day period sounds reasonable? That's the Yorktown, or York County?
Well, to Jeff's point, he was talking about more business or luncheon meetings.
Right.
We might want to consider...
Well, anything that doesn't trigger the number, right?
Or 20, or well, whatever that number is.
Anything under the double, yeah, double your capacity.
Okay.
Again, three meals a day, right?
I mean, if I, if I'm living next door to something that's basically being, you know, doing 30-person business lunches every, I'm going to be mad, you know. So I do think that's going to start to be something that's invasive on the neighbors.
Then I'd say, well, let's keep with what York County has.
We gotta start with this, if there, if we get, you know, if this goes for a year or two, and people need more, then they can always come back, right?
Cool.
Any other things from the Commission? Because I, David's got his hand up. You know, I don't have to let him talk, but I will.
All, all we're doing right now are the weddings and the hosting business meetings, but we still have the other things to talk about. Yes, okay.
So, so I have it straight, we're talking up to 50, a parking plan and frequency of...
Yes.
One a day.
Events.
One a day.
Or two in a seven-day period.
Two in a seven-day period.
Up to 50 and above the number that is, in other words, if you, if you're having an event that is lower than your, I'm not sure what to call this number, the kind of catering capacity.
That's good enough.
Below the catering capacity, you can, you can do anything, basically.
Right, they don't count as...
Between the catering capacity and that 50 number, then you need to go for a special exception.
Doing a special exception, right?
A one-time special exception.
And are you all agreeing to the, to the, to the commercial quarters like the other commercial, not in the non-conforming B and Bs?
Right.
Yes.
Got it.
And, and I think also that the exception goes with the property.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we want to tackle all of it before?
Let's let him talk. He's going to keep raising his hand.
Just, just two thoughts. On my street, or on Richmond Road, next to the Bed and Breakfast that's next to the hospitality house, which may have gone the wrong way, as Demetrius has pointed out, but let's assume it hasn't. I mean, there's two people who are now putting in something approaching a million dollars into houses. It's well over a half a million for sure, because they started there. And, and if I was doing that, and I lived next to a Bed and Breakfast that had a wedding every Saturday, and Friday, and Sunday, starting April, whatever, through the middle of September, and whatever, I would feel like I had really been taken to the cleaners buying that house. And I like single-property owners, I understand the Bed and Breakfast, and I'm all for all the points that Demetrius is making, but if this hits these neighbors, you're going to hear a whole different song, I think. I wouldn't want it. I lived on the other side of the Randolph was the Hornsby's, the real Hornsby's, and they had parties with students about every other week. Now, they were sort of nice, but it did get kind of tiring to hear that music in my backyard when I wanted to hear something else in my backyard in the afternoon. So I, I, I think you're, you're, here's, here's a key point. If it's inside, it's one thing. I'm not worried about the business meetings, I mean, that's a whole different kind of an atmosphere, whatever. I'm worried about big speakers, blaring music throughout the neighborhood, whatever the ordinance is in the daytime, it's pretty loud, and day after day after day. And, and so I think you need to consider what that's going to be like. The second thing, which nobody's talking about outside versus inside, is the setup. I could easily see somebody setting up a tent for the whole eight months. I mean, why not? And so, and if you have one event after the other, the tent's there. And what if it's on the front lawn on Richmond Road or your corridor street? I don't want to see a, a tent that can handle 40 people and stay dry and have the, the catering, and the, and the band, and the, and the dance floor, and all this stuff, a permanent structure, which would be allowed if you have for a three, four-day period, if you stack them up. And I didn't hear you really saying they had to tear it down within an hour afterwards or not. I mean, I guess it's in the York ordinance, but, so there's two real problems here, I, I think. I mean, I'm not worried about the business thing, because it's a whole different atmosphere than the wedding thing, but if it's outdoors, and day after day, or, or every weekend, it was, it's not going to be a neighborhood, in my opinion. It's a, it's a commercial, it's totally commercial. And the whole concept of Bed and Breakfast was not to turn the street into a commercial street, that's why they only allow so many. So I, I don't know how to deal with it, but, but, but outdoors and, and big tents, and, and I, I, I don't know, it's a party, a wedding's a party.
Sure.
Every wedding I've been, and it's a blast.
David, it's just like the tailgating with football.
Well, I know, but, but...
Close Harrison running in front of my house every weekend.
But there's five home games.
Yeah, but still, it's a...
I know, but if they had a football game or a tailgating party Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, starting in the middle of April through the middle of October, I wouldn't want to live in town. I mean, I love living in town, but it'd drive me out. I, I mean, I think Sarah's got a lot of points here. I don't, I don't think we're thinking through the noise effect of, of parties outdoors. It would just get tiring if your neighbor had 30 people over three days in a row, or even once every weekend. I, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm pretty nervous about, about this thing. If it's indoors, it's a whole different thing. But, go ahead, I, I've said enough.
Is there a, what governs outdoor tents now?
To get a permit.
Do you have, you do have to get a permit for an outdoor tent? Right, even if you're just having it in your own backyard, right?
Can you get a fire inspection?
Okay. So that, that answers your tent issue.
Well, does, does that have to be taken up and down in a certain time?
Yes.
It's a permit for a function, is it not for, like, something happening on this day at this time?
But if, but if I had, I mean, if I'm getting into a real business, because it's a business, and I have a professional running my, my B and B that I bought for, to make money, I mean, I'd love to schedule the, the, the pre-wedding party on Friday, and, and then have the wedding on Saturday, and then maybe I even have...
But we're not going to let you do three, we're going to let you do two.
Right.
Two, two...
Two in a seven-day period.
Two in a seven-day period, but then if it's every weekend, I, I, I just...
David, I'd much rather have a wedding party next to my house than a keg party at the student room.
Well, we don't have big parties.
Oh, you don't?
The students in my neighborhood, I mean, if you said have two or three, and we've got this whole committee here to talk to students, that you shouldn't be having all of the people on the campus who can't drink on the campus and have to come to your house. And, and, and the way the drinking problem is now in, in the neighborhoods is, is excellent, so we don't have.
We're getting far off field.
But we don't have any environment that is where there's a keg party, weekend after weekend after weekend.
House across the street from me.
Well, but once again, we're getting far off field, so, one, just to sort of think about the things you said, the tent issue, it's a, it's a compliance and enforcement issue. In theory, they're not, people, no one's allowed to do that. The noise ordinance, so it shuts off anything loud after 11, 65 decibels up to 11, is that what it is?
That's what I recall, yes.
Yeah.
That's, that's not super loud.
And I think what it is now is that, you know, if my neighbors had a loud party next door, you know, if they had it once every two months, I'm not going to call and complain, but if it is a business that's continually violating, once again, I think it's a, it's a compliance and enforcement concern, because if they're blaring music, that's going to be above 65.
60, it's like, everybody should go check out what 65 decibels is like, because 65 decibels in the backyard next to you is something where you don't hear your music, you hear their music in your backyard. I, I mean, I really think you need to check that out. And if that were every weekend, which is what, now that we don't live in the Bed and Breakfast, it's totally to make money, it, it, it's, it's kind of a, a messy thing. It'd be like living next to the deli, with the deli having everything outside.
All right, I'm going to cut you off, because we've got someone else who wants to speak.
Good afternoon. First, I want to thank you guys, because, you know, in the beginning of the meeting, I thought we actually were going to do something positive here. And let me just, I was speaking with somebody, a college student came to interview us the other day about branding of the city. And, you know, she asked me, she was at the planning commission meeting last, the work session, and she said to me, "My God, what is up between B and Bs and the planning commission?" And I said, "You know, I don't know." But the thing that came out of it was, she said, "Why is it that when you're talking about B and Bs, and we brought in front of you guys last month and the month before, that every time that we try and bring out something about expanding our businesses in the B and Bs, it always ends up in the negative? Instead of turning around and saying, 'Wow, what a great idea to think of bringing in some additional revenue into the city, allowing B and Bs to thrive, instead of going into foreclosure and turning into college rentals,' instead of starting the conversation off in such a positive note and trying to find the positive road to go down, we always, in these meetings, seem to go down the worst-traveled road that we can possibly find.'" And I think the one thing, in listening to David just now, I realized why. I don't think anybody understands here, some of you do, I know you do, but I know, David, you don't, because I live in my home, and I think that's the difference, is I don't want a band in my front yard. I don't want people in my front yard, I have three children, okay? This is my home. B and Bs are people's homes. And we are doing this because this is actually something that has been brought to our attention. We get about one call a week to hold a wedding. I'm not talking 100 people, I'm not talking a party with a band and amplified music. I'm talking about people who want an alternative to a hotel party. I'm talking about people who want 25, 30 people, they may want a violinist at the most, maybe they want a harpist, but they certainly don't want, you know, Kiss out on the front yard with amplified music. As far as a tent, if we put up a tent, it would only be because inclement weather is coming, and the tent would come down. It's my home, and it's everybody else's home. Somebody said to me today, we had a wedding at the inn this afternoon at 1:00, okay, and we had 10 people there who were all registered guests, and they said, what a neat thing they thought it would be, because eight of them had never been to Williamsburg before. So as I'm sitting there doing this wedding, I said, you know, "Are you kidding?" And they were like, "Wow, this is so great, you know, maybe we'll come back another time and get to do Williamsburg." And they said the neatest thing that they thought would be, be able to drive down the street, and of course, they had a vision of a horse-drawn carriage going down the dirt road, but they said, "Wow, you know, to see this little wedding going on in the front yard, they just thought it was so quaint," which changed their vision of the city. And right now, with tourism the way it is, and I really think that we need to be a little bit more open-minded in how we are going to bring revenue into the city. Sarah, I'm a resident of this town, and the last thing I want to do is to annoy my neighbors or anybody around me. We've been here for 14 years. My first priority is to be in that home till the day I die and to raise my kids there, and I think most of the B and B owners that I can speak for feel the same way. So the last thing we want to do is to upset our neighbors, have a band on our front yard. My husband works on that grass from the time it starts growing to the time it starts dying in the fall. The last thing he wants to do is have 100 people trample on his grass. So like, I think we're making a mountain out of a molehill, we're looking down the road to see what we can possibly find as something that would happen. People aren't going to rush into this town to buy big old houses and turn them into wedding parties on the front yard, because you don't make enough money in this business to support yourself anymore. So if you think that this is ever going to happen in all the empty houses, and there's going to be parties all over the place, it's not going to happen. But what will happen is what's happened next to my house, and these houses will foreclose, and you will have a party every night, but it's going to be 30 college kids, and they're going to be hanging out the windows drunk. So I'm just asking that, like, if we can just keep in mind, these are residential homes with families that live in them, that are not trying to have a big blaring party every single weekend on the front yard. Thanks.
Just, if you don't mind, I, I, I'm all for her. We're, we're in total agreement, and I apologize if I deal with what we're trying to regulate, because if all Bed and Breakfast were like your Bed and Breakfast, we wouldn't have anything to discuss. We'd just say weddings are allowed, and, and that's the end of it. And, and, and it's fine. And so, but, but we have gone one big step forward. We now allow people to buy Bed and Breakfast, hire somebody to be in it, they have to live in town, but they, who knows where, and, and that's a different group than what you're describing. Now, the point is to be positive. So I'm all for this, everything she said, and I think all my neighbors would be and so forth. But we have two routes, try to figure this out for the, the person who's going to abuse it and make a mess, or we assume that will never happen. I mean, one option, I suppose, is to just say weddings are allowed, and we, let's see what happens. I don't have a problem with that one. Maybe we're trying to create regulations when we don't even know if there's a need to have regulations. Maybe we just allow weddings to be allowed, you've got this 50 limit, seems fine, you've got under 24, whatever it is, and, and that sounds fine, and it's mostly inside. And, and let's just, maybe even if they have 45, it's a violin and a flutist. I mean, you know, fine.
And, and look, we, I think you're a point.
So I just want to be positive.
And I think that we, I don't, I can't speak for the other commission members, I feel that we're making positive steps. I think we have suggested a number of changes that allow for things that are currently not allowed, but I do think it is our job to not just think about one group of people, but to try and really think about the whole community. And, you know, some people are going to think that this is not enough, and some people think this is too much, and we're really trying to balance those two different sides. And, you know, unfortunately, the regulations are written for people who are not the good actors, and they're not intended to be punitive on good actors. They're trying to make sure that bad actors don't have a negative influence on the town. So, you know, I, I see this as making steps forward, and we may not go far enough on the first pass, but that doesn't mean that we can't make changes if something we do is unworkable. So it sounds like we have direction to staff to draft something for events, and I don't see there's any reason to separate weddings from other events. We're defining events to be basically based on size. And indoor versus outdoor, once again, we're going to, at this point, and obviously this is go out for a public hearing, but rely on existing regulations in terms of noise, outdoor structures, to deal with those issues. The one thing we have not discussed that was something that we, was brought up and we didn't have consensus on, was whether or not owner-occupied Bed and Breakfasts could also have a full-time live-in manager, and if so, if there should be any restrictions on that. Does anyone have any comments on that issue?
I don't see why they'd want to have a full-time live-in manager. They have four rooms to rent, that would take up half their rooms.
Well, one of the examples that we've given is that the live-in manager might actually live in the family's part of the house.
Okay.
Yeah, we had a long discussion of this last time, and there were some presumptions, I think, about what that would entail, and I think some of us assumed initially that it would require building another structure with an additional bathroom, and we would sort of treat it as an in-law apartment. But what we heard in the, in the comment period was that, no, this in fact would be something where, you know, it would be like having a nanny in your house. It would be somebody who'd occupy a bedroom, a family member's bedroom, like a family member that had moved out, for example. So, to your point, Demetrius, I mean, I sort of had the same question, is how could you, you know... I mean, I, I sort of had the same question, is how could you, you know, how could you pay somebody, it, it seems crazy that you would pay somebody only to then reduce your revenue by half or whatever, but that's not in fact what, what is necessar, that, that's not the situation. That's not a likely, or even really an, an expected circumstance. And I've thought about this a lot more since this, 'cause I was sort of on the fence, and, you know, all this is new to me, so it's, it's hard to kind of get your mind around it.
The first time.
Um, yeah. But this seems, I think, I feel the, sort of the same way. We've, we've kind of come to consensus on the, on the events. This seems kind of straightforward, actually. I think this is something that we probably could allow, because it's difficult to imagine a scenario where, as you suggest, you'd consume some of your rentable area, this is somebody that would be in your house with you. And I, I think, I suppose, you know, if this becomes a big household, you know, we, we kind of discussed the nightmare scenario of somebody moving in with five kids or whatever, but, you know, I, I don't think we need to, I don't think we need to anticipate that. I mean, this is not the Lower East Side of Manhattan, or, you know, the West End of Boston or something. This is a, these are, these are big, relatively large, anyway, suburban, or if not suburban, you know, low-density sites. And so, having a couple extra people in there, or an extra person conceivably with a family even, to me seems like something that we could probably allow by right. I mean, I, I'm at the point where I would support that, I think, even though we were having a hard time with it last time.
But you're in a, a neighborhood where I'm not allowed to have-
Have a nanny.
A, a family. I could have a nanny. So that, that's a different, I do think there is, when you, the examples that we say, this would be allowed, it's a nanny, it's a, so is, is it a, you could have an onsite resident manager, or could you have an onsite resident manager and their attendant?
And their immediate family.
Yeah. That's, that might be one of the questions.
Yeah, okay. So, so in the, when we talked about the full-time live-in manager in a non-owner-occupied, in other words, you move out and hire somebody to run the thing, that could be a family.
That could be a family.
We've got consensus on that. Again, that's straightforward. That's just sort of swapping one household for another.
And that's already, we've already passed that, didn't we? Yeah.
Yeah.
It's already done.
So, so this, then, maybe what we have to wrestle with a little bit is, is whether this, it seems like maybe it's easy to allow it if it's just a single manager. As it becomes a, a, a married couple or a couple, or expands to a household, then maybe it's a little bit trickier. But maybe we could start at the point where we can have some consensus on whether a full-time, single live-in manager is allowable by right. Is that, is that a starting point, anyway?
I don't have a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I'd vote yes for that, but I guess I think that's very restrictive in the hiring process, to put an ad out saying, "I'm looking for a full-time live-in manager, and you cannot have a partner," or-
Sure, yeah, no, I'm just, I'm trying to-
The hiring.
Let's find a place to start and then kind of build outward, 'cause I agree with that.
So, yes, I, I totally agree with the individual. And I think there is some balance between what, you know, what we could do in our own homes, you know, we could have a nanny, or we could rent a room out, you know. Can we rent a room out to a, a couple? You know, do we hit three-person rule, four-person rule, rules, and how they intersect with this? But we also are dealing with much larger properties, larger houses than most of our houses. And so, I mean, I guess, I just, I just think it would be an untenable situation as an employer to put out an ad for a manager that had so many probably illegal restrictions on, you know, who could even apply.
Carolyn, remind me what the current restrictions are on renting a room in a private home. It's by right?
If you rent one room to a room, or by right, two rooms to, up to two individuals, and each of their two rooms with a special exception.
So you could do one room to two people by right?
One room to one room or by right.
Yeah, 'cause that's why the one, one and one just makes a, it's very parallel.
Yeah.
And it's, so the by right there makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's the going beyond that then.
I just think it's hard to think.
No, no, I, I don't, I don't-
And the concern is- I can picture some of the, you know, some of the Bed and Breakfasts have fairly large-
Right.
-family housing, you know, spaces, that have, you know, bedrooms for two or three children. The children go off to college. Now the owners are older, they don't want to be running this, so could a new young family move in and basically allow them to stay in their home, but also, yes, and is there room, yes? So I, I think that the possibilities of, of a reasonable outcome, at least for me, are there for some of the properties, and I don't think we wanna have it be so restrictive. It also seems like a bad business model that you have to have a single person who, you know, and then, so it just seems like every six to nine months, you're gonna need to hire a new person, because they're tired of, you know, living with you and your family and not having their own family.
Well, yeah, and, and kind of coming back to, there's a fundamental thing here, the thing that distinguishes a bed and breakfast. One of the main things that distinguishes a bed and breakfast from an inn or a hotel, and, and this is specifically what we're talking about here, is you live on the property. So are you now opening your home to, to a family, because you wanna hire this, this one person who's gonna manage it, or do you? So, it's, it's a little, I mean, it's almost difficult to imagine a scenario in which you would kind of tax this building with so many extra people. I, 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 I mean, I, I guess kind of what I'm coming around to is, this might be something that we could allow by right without any restrictions, partly because of the nature of the, the nature of the problem. And the problem is, I still wanna stay here. I'm, I'm, I'm now eighty years old, and I'm tired of doing this every day, so I'm gonna hire somebody to do it for me, and I'm gonna provide them with some housing as part of their compensation. And that housing is, what, is that a room? Is that half my house? You know, it's probably a room. If it's me, it's a room, you know? So, so it's-
You can have a family in that room, too.
Well, it's theoretically possible that, again, we sort of have the Lower East Side model, where you, you know, you got, you got piles of people running around in your house. It seems to me exceptionally unlikely, and probably not something that we need to spell out in a, in a restriction.
And we don't, in the one where it's the investor and has a live-in manager, we don't specify anything about-
No, I think we even discussed it being a family, right? I mean, I think that's actually in there, that it could be-
Yeah, I mean, it's parallel, I mean, it's, you know, there's... Okay. Are we, we have consensus on that?
I think so.
All right, Carolyn, have we given you your marching orders?
Sure.
So we will see this at the-
Do a draft ordinance for-
April meeting.
April meeting, since we don't have any public hearings, and if that's acceptable, then we'll advertise it for a public hearing in May.
May public hearing. Okay.
I'm really glad that we discussed all these items, 'cause I think the B and B business is the, one of the most regulated in town. And I looked at the timeline going back to nineteen forty-eight and how everything evolved, and I'm glad we're able to at least work on trying to make things better and hopefully increase their revenues and allow them to succeed, and, and maybe we'll have, like I said, a new niche for Williamsburg.
Well, keep visitors in the city, right?
Mm-hmm.
Wonderful. Okay. Nothing under new business. Under informational items, we have the city council report, our planning department monthly report, and the monthly financial statement. Any questions on any of those informational items? Nope. Okay, our next meeting's April sixteenth. We don't have any public hearing scheduled, but we will be able to review the-
B and B regulations, and we'll also be in the municipal building, 'cause this is our last meeting in-
Goodbye to Stryker.
Goodbye to Stryker. Okay.
All right.
Wonderful. Without a close to meeting.